Can you open the popcorn?
Not right now, yeah. All right. Maybe the time started.
We advise that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertising the Valentine Times and Canyon Carrier Post on January 11, 2017, and place on the bulletin board on the C and D. Mr. Barrow?
Here.
Mrs. Clody?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
And let's take care of some business. We have some action items. First is the Resolution 2017-189. This is awarding the contract for animal control services to M and R Wildlife Renewal Services.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-190. This is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to create sewer accounts and 2017 billing for various residential properties.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-191. This is authorizing donation of various street signs from the township to the Delray Industrial Society. It's the second wave.
This is confirming the original one.
Confirming the original one. It was supposed to be on the last agenda. Got it? Okay. Second.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-192. This is correcting sewer billing for Block 124, Lot 4.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
Aye. And finally, Resolution 2017-193. This is a resolution authorizing executive session to discuss the following items. Legislation regarding affordable housing. I'm sorry, litigation. Still Wag, you never know. Still Wag Farms redevelopment agreement and the CWA contracting negotiations.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
And I need a motion authorizing the payment of progress payment number four for the sand filter improvements project to C and H Industrial Services Inc. in the amount of $175,312.69.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Barrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Catcher.
Aye. Okay. So a couple of things we have to figure out. First of which is an easy one that probably isn't, and that is a November. So November on the first Tuesday, which would be our public meeting, is Election Day. The second Tuesday is the first day of League of Municipalities when many, some, or all of us will be at the convention. So I'm just wondering what if we want to do here? Do we want to pick another date in the week? We have that public meeting, and I would suggest that we have at least one work session. So what do we do? What have we done in the past? Move it to Monday, the 13th, or?
Or only just, maybe just move it to Wednesday?
Wednesday, the what?
Eight.
The eighth? I have class.
That's next.
How about Mondays?
Gotta be here.
Is Monday bad for anybody?
What's that?
Are Mondays bad for anybody?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have class? Are you teaching class?
I think my class will be done by then.
What, November? November 7th?
Yes.
Before we, before we set it?
Yeah, before we set it, we'll be done.
Right now, it's scheduled for the 14th.
Right now, it's scheduled for the 14th. So do we want to go to the 13th? Change that to the?
Or it'd be through the week before, then the week six.
Six. Yes, it would be the sixth. So either the 94th, Election Day, it's Monday. Monday the sixth or Monday the 13th. Anyone have a conflict with those dates?
No, I don't confirm both.
Tyler, do you have a conflict?
No.
Patty, no?
No.
You have a conflict?
I don't think there are any 13th, but that's not really a conflict. That didn't even happen.
Oh, my gosh, how would we do that? What did we say, the 13th or the sixth? Either one. Jeff, have a?
What would make?
The sixth, I'll be at the one.
Why do we make this for Jamie's year?
Yeah?
Well, we're, we're plus producing.
Can we do the sixth? Is that enough time for him?
Yeah.
Well, probably doesn't because she's out two nights.
Yeah. Well, what if we did it the night? Probably doesn't matter.
I mean, I would have to get somebody to cover for me over 13. So I'm having this.
He would be two nights, right? That night in the election.
Oh, right.
But if we did it on the 13th and you get someone to cover for you here, you'd still be out, only out one night then, right? Because you'd be out till 13th of August.
No, the 13th, I'm away. I'm on vacation.
Oh, okay.
So, so here's, here's my only concern, and that is on the sixth, we're here late, she's here a quarter before the sun comes up.
Yeah. Let's do it after 13th.
Yeah. So why don't we do it the 13th? Let me just make sure the 13th isn't a conflict. But I think it is. It is not. So why don't we move to the 13th? All right. And then have somebody cover.
That's the work session and the public?
That's the, that's the public. And then the work session will leave 28, 1, 2, 3, 4, 28. The work session.
And the public.
Yeah. Okay, so the 13th for the public, and the 28th for the work session. All right, well, that was easy. Okay. Jeff, I want you to tell us everything you know about Burncocks National Water Trail.
All right. This is, you have a copy of a resolution that another community passed, and they're asking towns that are along Burncocks Creek to give consideration. It's coming from Burncocks Capitals Incorporated, which is a nonprofit, to have a national water trail. The resolution's kind of self-explanatory, but just, there's no commitment on your part. It's just more of a ceremonial thing. Similar to the bike paths, you know, activities that can go along the county.
So this would just make Burncocks part of that trail?
Yes.
Sure. Well, I say we do that. What do you say? Okay. Public meeting?
Yeah.
You know what that is?
Yeah.
Gonna be there.
Do you have a bolt thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Stay over at your side. Sneak. Next is request to waive interest. This is for Block 9, Lot 46, Lot 01. Guys?
This is a block and lot with a cell tower on it. That's the only thing that exists on it. And the home company had their offices in Boca Raton and said that they were out of the offices due to the hurricane for the reap that the billing came in. Tax offices allowed, permitted to waive that interest. The only people that could waive it is township council, who decided to do so.
This is, yeah. It's $42.84. Can we still?
Yeah, can we talk?
Okay. Then your belts. Yeah. It's the least we can do. It's the most we can do. Okay. Next is Lot 9.04. I'm sorry, Lot 9.04, Lot 5. There was a fire on the property, and are we allowed to this saying what the name of the property is? We've been, if we did?
Probably.
Okay. So this property had a very serious fire. It had a structure on it that was burnt in essence to the ground, and they're looking for relief from taxes on, on that portion of the building. So what is that number again? What's, what's the amount of the relief that we would be?
Actually, we would have to have the assessor calculate.
Oh, okay.
Because they're gonna have to do, if you're okay with it, do an adjustment based on the land versus the building. But the property did have a fire in February, and the only adjustments that we can make internally, the assessor can make things, if they happen before October 1st, to take off the property, which they've already done for next year, but they can't do anything for this year.
Jeff, the last two sentences, or is it the last sentence where it starts the property is currently being marketed? Is that something we should be overly concerned about?
Um.
That's the thing that jumped out.
Yeah. That information was provided to me that still has a significant value.
Yeah.
And whether, I'm not 100% sure how that plays into your consideration, but it was brought to my attention, so I thought I'd bring it to you first.
No, I, I'm glad you did. I'd like to see what the assessor tells us, how much we're waiving.
I got, we can get that calculation for you and bring it back to the next work session.
That'd be great.
That's still the end value.
So there's?
Well, we don't know what the land value is. That's what it's, that's what it's being marketed at.
There's another, there's another building in the business.
On there?
Yeah, on the property. And so I don't know what, how much of that building would have, how much of the value of the property was, was tied to that building that is no longer there or usable. And likely a liability now. It would have to be turned down because there's no way of the, I believe.
We'll get that information for you.
That'd be good. We'll address this again. Okay. So we have the flood prevention ordinance as a draft. You or Jim?
Let Jim take this one.
Okay, so as I believe most of you are aware, the flood insurance rate maps for Burncocks County are being updated. They're the ones that are prepared by FEMA. It's for entire, it's all of Burncocks County, and they become effective at the end of December. And in order to stay part of the flood insurance program, you have to update your existing flood prevention ordinance to be consistent with current standards or recommendations that they require. So what they do, what they do is they gave us their model flood prevention ordinance, and if you look at the two, the existing ordinance and the proposed ordinance are generally the same. I don't know if you got the color-coordinated version?
No.
No, we got the black and white scans.
Bottom line is, I would say like 80% of the changes are required, you know, and it just defines new terms and, and clarifies certain regulations. There are some optional standards that they recommend you consider. They're just make the requirements a little bit more strict, that we probably do need direction on as how you want to proceed. I mean, I can give you our, we can go through them. There's only a couple. And there's also a couple administrative issues that I know you just want to confirm the way things set up. So if you don't?
So if you're prepared to?
Oh, yeah.
To tick them off?
So the optional requirements?
Can I just ask you, favor?
Yes.
As you go through these, can you tell us what the colors are so that we can go back and then?
Okay.
Because I tried to do it based on the highlight from the black and white, and it's near.
All right. I'm on, I'm starting on page one. You know, at the top, there's three highlights. They just tell you what the color code is. Page two, everything's?
That one I was able to figure out.
I'm sorry, I don't want to start. I'm starting it. Okay. The page numbers at the bottom right corner should be?
Section one.
It's 60-3, the flood damage prevention ordinance is at the top.
Section two is all? I'll do the section two right now.
Yes, one of me.
Are this the existing?
That's our existing one.
Okay. So page two is all green?
All green.
Okay. Page three, at the top, that section is blue. And this also refers to another part of the word. It's more talk, it talks about substantial damage and substantial improvement. So what that means is whenever a home is substantially damaged, they're required to, in order to rebuild it, they're required to bring it into compliance with the flood standards, the flood damage prevention standards. And it identifies substantial damage as something that's 50%, the cost to fix it is 50% more than the value of the home before the damage occurred. So that's an existing standard. What they're asking you is to make it, as an optional requirement you can enforce or require, is to make it cumulative over 10 years. Right now, it's set up as a single event. And it goes for substantial damage and for substantial improvement. Right now, if a homeowner wants to improve their dwelling, that's non-flood prevent, non-flood hazard compliant, i.e. the first floor elevation is below flood hazard elevation, that's non-compliant. You know, all first floors have to be above the flood hazard elevation. So if you want to improve your home, and if the cost of the home, the cost of improvement is more than 50% of your home, or if the home is damaged, you know, to a point where the repair is 50% of, of the cost of the value of the home, then you actually have to fix the home to make sure that it's flood hazard compliant. You have to raise the house up so the first floor is above flood elevation. If you have a basement, you have to put in floodproof walls or breakaway walls, things of that nature. So.
Let me just make sure I heard you right. First time you said it, I thought you said 50% more than the value of the home. What do you mean 50% of the value of the home?
Correct, before the damage occurred.
Not more than the value of the home.
So the standard right now is that, you know, it's if that damage or improvement is 50%. What they're saying is change it so that it's not a single occurrence, that it's cumulative over 10 years. So if you have over 10 years, you know, if you're damaged 10%, you know, five times, then the fifth time you have to upgrade it, upgrade the home.
So if you, if you were damaged, you're damaged, you fixed it, damaged, you fixed it, damaged, you fixed it, the fifth time you have to fix?
Just, just when you reach 50% cumulative.
Even if you've been fixing all along?
Yeah.
And this is damage from anything or from flood?
Any.
Yeah, I, I'd be honest with you, I'd like to see a color-coded version of this because this, I can, I can barely make out the letters in the highlights.
So I guess if you were smart, if you have damage from one, the first flood, you probably try to elevate it right after that rather than doing three, five times.
You have the money.
That's what I'm just saying. If you're in the long run, you're gonna end up spending all that money five times, and then you got to spend it anyhow.
The thing is, I mean, I don't know how often it actually occurs in Delaware.
No, but I'm saying there are places though where it does occur.
And what, I would assume in force, let's say?
It's technically needs to be forced, well, that's an administrative issue we're gonna talk about later, it's technically forced through the building permit process. So if they file for a building permit, the zoning official, construction officials who administer the permit is supposed to recognize that they're in a flood zone, and then, you know, as part of the building permit jacket, you know, keep a record of the, you know, keep a record of the cost of the improvement, because they do that anyway. They get the cost of the improvements and repairs, you know, based for, for building permit fee processing. So it's just administrative issue.
Did we get a digital version of this in email? Part of your report?
We didn't get a digital.
Okay, so I'd, I'd like to ask that we never get this again. We never get something that's grayed out. I couldn't read in the gray, and was hoping that we had some sort of a, some sort of a better way to do that. Can we just get the digital copies? I mean, it looks like that's a digital print, or did you do actual highlight?
No, it came color-coordinated.
Came here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's just a, yeah. I could redistribute it.
Yeah.
Can I email it to everybody directly?
Well, you can email it to Jamie or Jeff, but I, rather than getting a black and white scan of it, this doesn't help me because I was, I started back and forth and back and forth, and I threw up my hands and said, we'll have to?
Yeah, but if you sent it that way and it just came up as a copy, that was probably what.
Well, no, no, we understand why, but it made it really hard to read.
No, if, if we got the digital copy, then we can look at it on the screen prior to being here and do that.
I should have made sure, I should have communicated that it needed to go out color-wise because.
But could you still explain the few things so that?
One, yeah, okay. First is the substantial damage and substantial improvement.
An option.
Option. You know, is it whether or not to extend that over a 10-year period or just leave it always as a, as a one-time occurrence? And they also talk about whether or not reducing that from 50% to 40%. My recommendation, I don't think it's necessary to extend it over. I don't think you have that many cases in Riverside Park that really have that much damage, you know, to where it's maybe a factor, and nowhere else do you really have, I've heard of anybody having really any floodplain damage, so.
And would you keep it at 50% or?
I would just keep it at the?
At the same.
Yeah. And there's, there's nothing that's preventing a homeowner from going ahead and making the upgrades and improvements anyway. And that's the second thing, is the free board. So the standard is that you have to raise your elevation to one foot above the base flood elevation. The optional standard is to make that two feet or three feet. I don't think it's really warranted. You know, it's, again, any homeowner who's upgrading their house to be flood, you know, proof, can make it two or three feet above. You don't necessarily need to require it. Riverside Park is the most sensitive area for floodplain, you know, issues, and they're about, the new maps lower the flood elevation by a foot. So.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I mean, every, every survey we've done and every, you know, all the investigations we've done, really haven't shown anything getting at the first floor. I mean, there's maybe one or two where it reached the first floor, everything was just basement damage, so.
Chip, could we hit the rewind button again?
Yeah.
And say what you said about that the floodplain at certain parts of Riverside Park was lowered a foot?
It's being with the new maps, it's currently the flood, base flood elevation is 11, and it's being changed to 10.
So what does that mean in, in non-engineering?
I guess what it means is that the 1% storm event that may occur is not going to exceed elevation 10, rather than before they estimated it was going to exceed elevation 11. So that means everybody, everybody's home over there is relatively speaking?
One foot safer?
Closer, one foot safer. If not above already.
Okay.
Do you want to?
All right, that's a, that's, that's an interesting stat. I just can't imagine.
Helps with buying insurance. That's where it really?
It helps with buying insurance.
Ah, I got you.
It's gonna help you with buying insurance with the flood, with the waste return.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, those are the only two biggest optional items. The other one, administrative issues, are just keeping with the construction official being the local administrator, and any appeals, the way the ordinance reads right now, it's sent to the planning board for determination on the appeal. I don't know if that should still be a planning board. It seems a little odd to be a planning board to me. I think it should be a council issue. But again, you never see appeals. I don't know, I don't think the planning board's ever seen an appeal. It just doesn't happen. So. It's not too expensive.
Okay, so, so it's, there's really four main questions that were debated?
Yeah, there are two questions on the requirements and two questions on administering.
So that was the 10-year cumulative were not?
Yeah.
And the one foot above the floodplain were higher?
Yeah.
And then the building, the construction official?
As the administrator.
As the administrator, and then the planning board as the appeals body.
Yeah, well, planning board is set up right now as the appealing body, whether or not you want to change that to either zoning board or yourself. Those are the only two, bar, paid councils, I'm trying to make it. It just, you know, if somebody's asking for a variance or a waiver from having to comply with the flood hazard standards, I don't know if that really should be a planning board issue.
I think a V board is it.
Yeah. So any more councils.
So.
Well, it's because it, when somebody doesn't make their house floodplain compliant when required, it kind of affects funding, you know, because money, it's one way or another, and towns are gonna end up having to pay for something.
But there's also the requirements that should be driven by the zoning, if you think about it, zoning requirements on?
Yeah, it's a little bit more different. It's a little different than area zoning setback requirements. When you're dealing with, you know, damage to a property and living space and, you know, flood insurance rates and repair costs, because you're the ones that get complaints about the planning board or something.
So you think the council should have the?
We appeal our reason, huh?
I think you hear the appeals to of the zoning board decision. Technically, I think that's what it's, so. It's, it's.
So would it be advantageous for us to be part of the, you know, make it council? Would it be, I mean, is the homeowner be easier to get a decision?
Yeah, it would be a complaint for people alike, because they're gonna come.
I'm saying if it does, they're gonna be coming to complain to you guys rather than
the zoning board. But it's up to you, Matt, the circumstances, you really want to deal with.
What would you?
I think township council is a more appropriate body.
Yeah.
Everybody gets flooded down there, they come to you and say?
Right. Yeah. I think it should be.
Yeah, so.
And then, I know it's like we're deciding, but it's never happened, and it never really does happen unless, I mean, you never know.
Does he?
So I was just gonna say, touch base with what your feelings are on the construction official.
Um, the thing, there's, I just don't know how up to date he is with floodplain management, or, or him or her, whatever, you know, I know it's, it's, who he is now, but the thing is he gets the stuff in, so he should, he needs to be recognizing it, but I don't know, I mean, in other towns, it's like the township engineer or you have some sort of floodplain coordinator who's went through the classes and, you know, has got the certificates. So it should be a combination of the two, you know, because I'm not saying he should learn, you know, how, how it all works with the floodplain management, but he's gotta learn how to recognize it, because he's the gatekeeper.
So it should be you with him?
Yeah. It should be the township engineer and him, because usually the township engineer, you know, has that more experience with flood hazard issues.
Yeah. And he's the one.
We had that discussion, and that's why we're bringing it up.
Yeah, that makes sense.
so, um, it should be a combination of the two, you know, because, I'm not saying he should learn, you know, how, how it all works with the floodplain management, but he's gotta learn how to recognize it, because he's the gatekeeper.
So, it should be you with him?
Yeah. It should be the town's engineer and him, because usually the town's engineer, you know, has that more experience with flood hazard issues.
Yeah. Yeah, he's the one.
We had that discussion, and that's why we're bringing it up.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's.
Is there any other areas besides Riverside Park?
Yeah, there's, there's flood hazards along the Sweets Run, um, Stonehand, which I met from earlier, um, but a lot of the cases, the, the streams are so, the flood hazard really doesn't get above the top of bank that it impacts the homes that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Uh, Forge, there's actually, Westover Drive and Forge, they're being identified in flood hazard maps now, but I've grabbed, I really, the only time I've ever seen an incident or heard of an incident was at Westover where the, uh, the Culver Crossing got, gets blocked up, but hopefully, I think we tackled that through Darian, through the trash rack, it seems to be working pretty good. Um, other than that, I really have never, Notre Dame Drive behind home, it's anywhere along the Sweets Run corridor, that's, that's your only major river with, with, with established floodplain, but I've never really heard, I, we've seen people coming for Lomas, what that is, is a, a letter of map amendment where they're identified, the house is identified as a flood hazard area, but they've gotten a survey to show that the first floor is actually above, so they get deemed in floodzone X, and therefore they pay a lower rate. So, any, anytime I've seen a Loma come through there, um, you know, Notre Dame or a couple of lots, it's always been identified as X. So, it's always, everybody's always seemed to be above. So, it's really Riverside is where we know of houses that we believe the first floors are at or around the existing base flood elevation, which would should improve.
Yeah, I just saw that section where it says that disordnance applies to all areas of special flood hazards within the jurisdiction of the township, and just, I know I've only ever heard of Riverside.
Yeah, you got the Rancoas Creek, but that's all green, green space along their shorelines, and you have Sweets Run, those are really known too, and then the, the one on Westover, which is that tributary to the, Pommett Center or something like that?
Pommett Center.
Pommett Center. And that goes right into Simmons.
So, as I hear it, um, uh, we're looking at making the engineer and the construction official, or the engineer as the, as the person responsible for enforcement? Is that what, is that, let me, is that the que, one of the questions? Is that what we said?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm just, I.
I'm not asking you for, even, even for a suggestion.
Yeah, I think you just how to word it.
That's what we have to talk about, uh, that, and I think we all agree township council could be the appeals board, but the construction official and/or the engineer along with it?
I think, I think you need the construction official to be enforcing, or the council.
Yeah, I think this construction official should be the, the administrator and enforcer, but I think we should maybe add something in here and say as far as duties and responsibilities, that the construction official, once they identify it as a property in a flood zone, automatically sends it to the engineer for review.
Right.
Yeah.
With consult, consulting engineer.
You know.
You should be right.
Yeah.
Gary, you said and/or, if you leave it at that, and so.
Yeah, it shouldn't be and/or.
Well, if you leave it that way, then it's open to the policy that township wants to implement, you know, just leave it that way.
Do we wanna do and/or? Is that what you're saying?
I.
So, if we say the construction official would be responsible for identifying these issues and then would have the authority with the, after engineer's review?
We can do that.
Does that, does that sound like what you want?
Yeah, it sounds, it's gonna be a combination of just identifying in the ordinance that, you know, both entities have some.
Why don't we just do construction code official and/or engineer?
Because that gives you the flexibility, and it sounds like they're gonna be working together anyway.
I'm good with that.
And then, one of the key things too, is you wanna make sure that you guys are notified.
Yeah, that's what it's, yeah.
Because it was, you know, an issue earlier where it wasn't a notification at the construction code official, and sometimes they don't recognize the importance.
Do we have to?
Yeah, it's one, yeah, it's one thing establishing the ordinance, next thing is, we just have to, you know, adopt a policy and procedure together, you know.
And that wouldn't be best suited by doing it now together?
Yeah.
We could, could we say, construction official and/or the engineer are to oversee compliance, but that regardless, the engineer must be notified?
Isn't that your suggestion there, point two?
The page?
Designation of the local administrator under section four.
Yeah, the construction official and/or township engineer is hereby appointed to administer and implement this order.
Yeah, we started, they let Jim go through this, and then we kinda just started asking questions, and we bounced it all around.
I thought, I thought we were at the, the, the end of the, what needed to be changed? Are there more changes?
No, that, that is.
It's just the four, four things, correct?
Yes.
So, so what I'm saying is, and/or says to me, either one needs to know, but if we definitely want the engineer to be notified, then I think we need to add language that says, you know, either, either/or, add, you know, construction official and/or engineer would be the, the person responsible for compliance, however, the engineer should be notified of every incident, just so that we have an engineer look on it. Does that make sense? Okay. So, this is, the rest of this is just for information, I would still, yeah.
Why do I do this? Why do I, well, I don't know if you wanna make a decision now about the whole cumulative thing or base flood elevation thing, I mean.
Yeah, why don't we? Then we don't have to revisit.
And what I could do is I could make the changes, and then redistribute color copies, and then you see clear as day what's green, what was blue, and yellow.
I defer to your judgment on the cumulative.
Yeah.
I don't know if it makes sense, before somebody go above.
Well, the thing is too, is a lot of the homes that are in a flood hazard area are kind of, are low in value, so, and the improvement costs are gonna be high in value, so it's kind of, it's going to be, most of them are fifty percent anyway, and to do things, simple things like replacing a floor, it could be considered a high percentage of the, of the whole va, value, so they could kinda hit that fifty percent mark probably cumulative over time quicker, when you don't really want that, if they're really just doing a home renovation.
Yeah, I see.
So, we leave it at one year versus ten?
Leave it, leave it at, leave it at a single event, and then leave, you know, leave if you want.
Fifty percent?
At fifty percent, and then, uh, the base flood elevation, we'll keep it at one, one foot freeboard.
Okay.
And I'll circulate that.
Yeah, excellent.
With that comment thing, and I'll make sure you guys will think.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the only time, timeline is we just have to have it adopted by the twenty-first.
Up to December.
December.
Oh. Word trouble. Yeah, but it was October. Okay.
Good. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, here it comes again.
Bamboo.
The never-ending bamboo, the ever-encroaching bamboo. So.
That's a vicious plant, I mean, that's so long.
And now that we've talked about it, I see it everywhere.
Yeah.
Not necessarily in town, but everywhere I drive, I notice, oh my God, that's bamboo. Uh, so, Jeff, what do you wanna, what do you ask, what's the ask here? Everybody's, everybody, but I'm just looking to see.
The big issue is, in the past, when we brought this up, um, in the past, any item or any issue that started on Green Acres and then came onto private property, the policy has always been the private property owner would be, if it was poison ivy or something like that, and when it comes onto their property, they can cut it down, but you have a resident that has bamboo that's coming from our property, that's invading their property, and we had this up for discussion, and there was some feeling that, given that, you know, it's so invasive, that we should at least take a look at what it would take to get it out of there. Um, we've gone out, we've taken a look at, at how big the areas, the one area is about thirty or forty by seventy of bamboo, it, um, the other area is, is kind of encroaching, it's not encroaching, it's, it's near the Notre Dame right field fence on the big field, but, um, our guys are cutting it down, and it looks like they might even be spraying or something, yellow, or all the other bamboo that's green. The, the neighbor is on his property, um, and the, the two are marked, um, the one is at, at back behind Notre Dame Court, and the other, like I said, is along the right field, or the end of the right field area of Notre Dame, the big baseball field, and it goes, parts of it go all the way back to the creek, so we're dealing with issues where we have to get permits as well to remove it. Um, and the question came up is to, you know, take a look at it, Jerry, do you ever get a number? I know you were looking at it outside.
I said that it would be roughly eight thousand dollars to remove it, backfill, clean fill, but you won't guarantee it will come back.
Really?
I mean, it's got root system on it.
So, what about, it seemed like in one of our discussions, or pieces of those, that we, that the, um, there had to be a ditch below the root system level that was ten inches, twelve inches, eighteen inches, something, remember what that, whatever that number was?
I don't remember the depth, because everybody I talked to gives me a different depth, so I'm not exactly sure, but then, then we thought, we talked about that, but then what do you fill the hole with? I mean, because now it becomes a liability, you've got a whole green acre that we put there, that somebody can trip and fall, and, uh, we've filled that with.
So, um, could we, can we fill that with stone or concrete or something that it couldn't grow in?
We can do anything, the thing, the, the, the problem that I see is, this isn't the only house that we have that has bamboo grown in the backyard. I've had this, these talks with other people before, and I explained to them this is the way we work. This guy is pretty persistent, and I knew that he was gonna come to a meeting and, and present himself at the meeting, get what he wanted, so I wanted to make sure these guys were, right, how you wanna handle it.
We have this area, um, associated behind Fordham.
Fordham?
Yeah. And that side of town is, is becoming empty for basically.
Well, most of the people deal with it. I mean, I, I haven't had anybody not deal with it.
Is it difficult to cut down? Is it strong?
Not to chop down, but then it, you know, it comes, it comes right back.
Yeah.
But, um, now, I, I, I got some roundup the other day, and I was reading the back of it, they say that if you cut the chute, pour the roundup down into the chute, that it attacks the root system. I, that's on the back of the Roundup Bobber.
Really?
Yeah, so I don't know how good that is.
I tried it in Barrington, it didn't work, I'm gonna tell you, I, I cut mine all the way out, up below the root, and then I did, it was like put a shed, a solid shed with a slab on top of it, and it stopped.
You're gonna have a lot of sheds.
No, I'm just saying, so, so it's not easy to take care of.
And like Jeff said, the other issue is, there is a stream pretty close, so, I mean, if you start digging, then we gotta get stream encouragement from that kind of stuff, too.
That's the Sweets Run, right?
Is, is, uh, cause what, you know, I know how these plans work, if you, if we, if we block it, it's gonna go around, it's gonna eventually.
You gotta get it out.
Right. But it's not, if it was eight thousand dollars, or if it was something we could contain, you know, even if we could contain it, put a concrete ring in, contain it, let it grow like hell, and then, you know, but.
Eight thousand dollars is only that one portion of the high.
Hundred and quarter, right?
Not the whole.
So, there might be no.
Twenty of those.
Oh, yeah, there's, I don't know if there's twenty, but there's quite a few.
Have you talked to, like, um, flags or the people, like, at the different garden centers and see what they recommend? Have you ever reached out to any of them just to see what they're saying?
I reached out to the county, because I know they took care of the spot, and they, they, they dug it out, and said it came back, and had to go, it's a constant maintenance problem, problem. We got it, like, it's grown up at that Notre Dame there, but we, I mean, if you keep at it, it's just, you know, every year when we, when our, our guys go out, we cut it down, knock it down, and push it back, and you keep doing it, I just, you know.
So, I just heard of maybe garden centers, that's some other idea or something?
I, well, I only.
Rich, Rich is pretty knowledgeable, so I was.
I checked with, I checked with Jay's landscaping, and he said, I don't even want to do this stuff, it's just.
Yes, maybe just reach out to Rich and see.
Does it spread, like, from where you have it? Is it, is it just, does it spread quickly?
Not quickly, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to stop, it's, you know, like, they were saying, if we took this all out, it would be back in ten years.
Wow. And it's not indigenous to here, did someone plant it somewhere sometime? How did it, how did it get here?
I don't know.
Jerry, would the county have any for the state?
Nobody wants to know. The park, or, I call it Green Acres, I call the state, I, if the Green Acres say, here's the ball, if you wanna cut it down, or if you want them to cut it down, handle it however you wanna handle it.
Yeah, I just wondered if they had some type of advice.
If we were to, if we were to, just say, this particular patch, if we were to contain it, and I know that you're not, but, in a degree, of bamboo, if we were to contain it and make a ditch around it.
I don't think we really would have to make a ditch, if you're looking for something to do, a, and you wanna earn a recommendation from me, I would say dig a, you know, a, a two-foot trench right behind his house, either on his, he's like, you can come on to my property line, you can do it on that property line, whatever, and just knock it down and say, okay, well, now you got a trench there, it's, you gotta, you gotta deal with the trench, what you do is, the trench is up to you, but, um, because I don't know what to put in there with movement.
Right. Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, we, if we, even if we were to circle it, does this, does it spread by, you know, pollen or?
Now, it's all grows over roots.
So, it's there, and it just, it goes that way. Stop it from, stop the roots, stop.
And if you, and if you cut it, and you leave little pieces of it, it'll start growing from those little pieces.
Yeah.
Do you think about an arboretum? Would know, I mean, scientists that work at arboretums, but they, I'm just thinking, you know.
I just heard some, you know, in the, who really wanted to get involved, I mean, if you wanna go deeper, I'll try to go deeper.
Ryan, you have any comment? Yes, if we are going to go with the ditch option, the property owner would have to sign an indemnification that anybody who was injured by the ditch, it's not the township's fault. Property owner, any guests, agents, licensees?
It's on public property, so we can't keep other people from getting on that piece of property.
Ted. Having a ditch and just leaving it there is.
How about, that's, that's what I was thinking, concrete or stone?
I thought the same, Terry, just, you know, go on the back line, build a ditch, and put concrete.
That's what I said, you have to put concrete to kill, I mean, put it on top of.
I mean, more, way more, it's a lot of money. But if you fill it with dirt, it'll go.
It'll come back.
It'll go through the dirt.
You have to say it's not gonna.
No, concrete will work, but, but the thing is, how much concrete are you putting? I mean, it's gonna be costly, but, I don't, I just don't live in the air, I don't know what, it just seems, filling them big holes with concrete.
Well, it'd be, you know, a, a, a two-foot deep trench with, with the guy's house, right up behind his house, because we don't care if it grows the other way, it can grow into the woods all at once, it's, it's the other way, it's growing to the woods, whereas coming up into the ball fields, we have no problem with it, I go out there with the backhoe and keep after it, but I can't access this guy's backyard constantly to knock stuff down and not do it for everybody else in the town.
What's the cost if he just, does it, how do you make, just in general?
We don't know.
Yeah, how would it have to be to ditch, if it was concrete?
I don't, I don't know.
Come on, Jerry, you're supposed to know.
Well, the bamboo, probably a green acre, it's forty by seven.
Concrete over it.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm saying.
I'm just saying.
Just thick enough to stop the roots? You just could, if you had, like, the width of a ditch witch, and you just dug a big ditch witch ditch, and went right behind it.
Four inches and, and two feet.
And then the other question, now, instead of using concrete, use tar? Part cheaper?
Uh, not next to that, not next to the stream.
So, it looks like we need a little more information, uh, or we need a decision as to how aggressive we wanna bait.
Stone won't work.
Uh, and you don't know.
They have things like root barriers, and that's a.
That won't work.
Root barrier, good right through there.
I don't think it's cost effective to take it all out, it's gonna come back.
Yeah, not if it's.
There's a high chance of it coming back, so I think your option is either A, leave it, or B, investigate some option.
Why don't, why don't we, can we reach out to the homeowner and tell him, come up with an option, and tell us what it costs to, to put a barrier in there, and what, what we got to it? See what he comes up with?
No guarantees, just tell him, you know, we're, we're investigating, we encourage him to do the same, and see what he comes back with.
Uh, from a legal perspective, taking any action to fix private property, I'm afraid of.
No, no, but it wouldn't be private property, it would be on our property.
So, we're protecting his property, I, I'm afraid of the policy obligation that that might continue onto the other properties, and when you weigh that against, if you say no, his option would be to file a nuisance claim against the township, um, which I don't know if he would do, if he did, the damages would be whatever the cost of removal is from his property, which is probably, over time, even if he's, if he has a lawsuit and asks to hire a contractor just to dig it out on his property, it's probably gonna be cheaper, I would think, than anything the township would do to try and mitigate it from invading his property.
Yeah, but isn't it just gonna come back anyway?
There's nothing stopping him from doing a barrier on his property, right?
Correct.
But he feels more responsible for.
Yeah, his argument, yeah.
Any damages would be limited to removal, not blocking.
So, but, I, I, here we say, and I'm just devil's advocate saying, so removal is a repetitive process, so if he, he get, he removes it and sues us and wins, gets that money, and then removes it again, and removes it again, and removes it again.
Has it ever been removed?
Well, he's, he's out there and he has to weigh at it, it's already up into his yard.
I mean, how much does it cost to remove? Is he really going to incur all the litigation costs?
I have no idea.
I mean, I always think litigation costs would be way more expensive than he would ever get from what the township was on the damages.
So, it sounds like, like you are encouraging us not to, not to set a precedent in taking this action, and to, uh.
That's, that's correct, that's my recommendation. I'm not saying don't continue to investigate, but I think maybe it's a little too early to start representing to the property owner that you might take action.
Okay, so, um, somebody.
Point if you do his, who, we're about to lay down a board and get your call.
Right.
And answer how.
So, do we make any, we make efforts to clear any of that, you know, on our area there behind his house, but?
Not behind his house, no.
No.
Mean anything to it.
How about behind, at the end, past the right field boundary?
Well, if it's coming home to our bulk, yeah, we start to take, we cut it back and help it knock it down, yeah.
Do you cut it back just right there, or do you go back into it a little bit, or?
No, just enough so we get our equipment through, just run our equipment through it.
And you don't ever run your equipment behind another name for, can't get back there?
No, it's, yeah, I gotta go through his private property to get to it. And I explained to him when we went out, I said, we've never done this in the past, it's, it's, it's coming up with green acres, and he just was persistent, persistent, persistent. I said, I'll come, I'll get back, but, this isn't something that we've ever done.
Right, there's no legal obligation to stop any of that, like all the green acres in general, case law or anything?
I mean, I don't think there's a duty in the township to prevent it.
That's my question.
No.
No, I think instinctively, we all want to, we're all here because we like to get stuff done.
Yeah.
But it sounds like, uh, we'd really be making a mistake if we did that.
That's, that's my feeling.
And, and not, not this council, but, you know, if we're gonna, if we would open up the township and all the residents to the financial obligation of, of doing this all over town, that, that's the mistake, not, you know, it's not a matter of, it's not protecting us, it's protecting the township's money, we're stewards of that money.
Correct, if you help him out, I'm sure he'd be appreciative, he'd probably tell all his friends how much he even appreciates it.
Yeah.
They're gonna want it too.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned, my, my concern now that you've, you've brought that up, is that, you know, it's, it's our obligation and responsibility to not do things that, you know, that set precedents, that would cost the township lots and lots of money if it's not necessarily something we're obligated to do, it's a tough one.
Jeff, the other areas in town that you said that this problem exists, is it our land?
Green acres.
It's green acres.
Again, it grows. And again, it's encroaching on the property.
Okay, can we, and then what Gary just said is real concern.
Can we still look into investigating the cost of the barrier, just for...
Sure.
I mean, we could look at the cost a bit.
And then, if anything, we don't go with it, we can always recommend that to the homeowner.
Correct.
We could do that.
Correct, I, I mean, as long as it's not any specifics, like a particular contractor or just a land rent or anything like that, just, we could share what we investigated, not really recommend.
Right.
I wonder if that, um, you know, the spray that you said you used to, you know, round it, I wonder if that really does work, I mean, that would be interesting to see if it did.
Do you have problems with round them?
But it's a, we're on a great...
Didn't work.
Didn't work?
No, but, it's wicked, it's...
So I think, I think, uh...
Sounds weak.
What, what I hear is that, that...
It's ready to tie in.
Yeah.
Not until we're in.
You know, if you could research it some more, but as far as that particular homeowner is concerned, I don't think that we can do anything, I mean, that's what, that's what I'm, I'm hearing is the consensus, because, uh, it wouldn't be something that would protect the township certainly, or help the township, and, uh, you know, uh, it happens all over town.
All right.
Okay, um, so the next touchy subject we've talked about, I do have an update on, and this was regarding the, uh, the grass issue at, um, at, I don't see the address listed, but I think it's, uh...
Two.
Um, so I had a conversation with the homeowner last night, and, uh, without getting into particulars, uh, the homeowner was going through a difficult time with, where they had, uh, a parent that, that passed, and there was a longstanding illness, and it's just happened recently, and they have, they are cutting, they had the tractor broken, they're getting tractor fixed, there's your refrigerator out front, they said they're calling Jerry to find out about getting that removed, and they'll be cutting and edging, and, uh, told me about a fence contract, uh, if I knew a fence contract, I, I don't, but, uh, so they are, they are proactively involved, uh, understood, understood the situation, I think this is a case of, uh, uh, you know, one resident, one neighbor likes things a particular way, and another lay neighbor isn't necessarily that particular, uh, but that they are, they understand that it was below, uh, below what they had hoped it would be ongoing, and that they were actively, uh, hoping to remedy that, so, again, in my, in my fear of doing, changing the law to handle one situation, uh, I don't know that we should do that or not, uh, I don't think any, I appreciate all the work that Jeff has done, I don't know if Jamie was part of this roundup of ordinances and policies, but I don't think any of them, any of them hit the repeated notices issue, and it's not like it's an ongoing, like it's just been left and we just cut it every month or whatever, every three weeks, this is a, uh, ongoing, one at a time, uh, situation, they were, you know, uh, had a great conversation, and they were very much, uh, they very much felt that they, they had this under control, you know, whether it would be necessarily to the liking of the, the neighbor, uh, but they're, they put up a big old fence, and sometimes big old fences make much better relations with the neighbors, uh, so, so I don't know, this literally happened last night, so I don't know that we need to go through the process of creating an ordinance or tweaking already ordinance anymore, but I just felt like I wanted to hear the other side of the story, and I did, and, uh, they admitted that...
Did you recommend the timeframe, like, you know, how we have the thirty days, did you say to them?
You know, I said, I said, you know, what, what was discussed, and, uh, they said, you know, we've already done this, we're looking to do that, you know, ten minutes later, I got a text that said, you know, anybody that can do a fence, and I really wasn't in position to do that, uh, but they're, they're, uh, now actively able and willing and predisposed to, to correct that, so I don't know whether we wanna pursue the conversation anymore.
If I can add a little bit, um...
Please.
I sent a memo, it was too late to get on the agenda, I apologize, um, basically, I did this quick survey, and there are other towns, um, that do address repeat offenders, so I think we do have the freedom under our police power, if we wanted to move forward, and my recommendation would be adding a new violation, so a new section in eighty-three-nine, um, sorry, sorry, eighty-nine-three, and it would basically say, if you are convicted of getting two or more notices in a six-point, six-week period, that is a violation as well, and that would allow the township to then step in and mow along, uh, and that would go through taxes, just as it does elsewhere in the ordinance.
And things have come up also, because Jeff said there were some things that were playing the game as well, and you said...
We've, we've had some issues with vacant property, vacant properties that were managed by banks, that we, we had to go out, I wouldn't say a large number, but, uh, maybe two or three that have done it, or you expect, you know, you said you have it on a schedule, yes, we have it on a schedule, and then it goes to two and a half weeks, and the grass gets pretty, pretty high, um, and I, I've read what Brian sent over, the only, the only concern I would have, and, again, it would be a council policy, is that, is that being notified of high grass would automatically make you guilty, sort of, in, in this policy, which is...
Well, I, I understand, um, it would have to be a conviction of so many within a period, so it's...
It doesn't talk about the conviction, it just says a notice.
No, there's further down, it says upon the conviction of property owner or tenant, township may arrange for the ongoing maintenance of the...
That's on the ongoing maintenance, but before that, it says if you, if you're notified twice in six weeks, essentially you're guilty.
Correct, and that is to try and close that loophole, because, see, what the problem is, is that if you get the notice, and you fix it within ten days, there's no violation, so a resident can be lazy and only cut on that ninth day every time they get a notice, which basically results in the property being unsightly and the ordinance being avoided. This is a mechanism that is, I've tried to tailor it to be narrow enough that you're only getting people that are kind of taking advantage of that little bit of a loophole.
So, how about you change the wording from, like, notifying to notifications to, like, at the determination of, let's say, the, the construction official or the administrator, because, well, no, because then they can determine whether or not it, yeah, well, I mean, somebody's gonna have to evaluate, I agree, it's subjective.
It's the subjective standard.
Yeah, but it's better than just notification, notifications, I agree with Jeff, it's like, you know, just because somebody notified, all of a sudden that counts against the person.
I, and I, I agree, it addresses the issue, I, I just wanted to make sure council was aware of, the policy part of it is that basically someone's guilty based on a notification, and I sit there, I mean, we, we've had people call, you know, where neighbors don't like neighbors, and they know their neighbor's on vacation, and, I mean, believe me, things like that happen.
I'm sure, um, and...
Yes, sir.
The numbers, as far as two and six, that can be changed, I've, um, the idea is to try and not be able to capture someone who's went on a week's vacation, and, you know, they just didn't arrange for their lawn to get cut, they do it when they get home, um, but the township should also...
But you know, you, you talked about the subjective bit, I mean, and tell you right now, our construction code official does go out, and if he sees things that he doesn't think are right, he can write up violations, violations, so...
Yes, and that's based on the code.
Yeah, there's a written...
Not on him saying it's too high.
No, I agree.
What if you could say, um, we did two separate weeks, like, a notice, you know what I'm saying, like...
I agree, this addresses it, if, the issue that was brought up, this would address it, but it addresses it in a way where the person doesn't come to court, and yet that is sort of like a mark against them, and they don't come to court a second time, and it's, and it's a done deal in terms of going to that next step, so I just wanted to just make sure councils are aware of it, I guess everybody had time to see that, all right?
If that's your reading, then maybe I need a little bit, to be a bit more clear, the intention would be, the township would have to prove that they were noticed of violations at two or ti- two or more times within a six-week period.
Right.
So, the going to court would be after the notifications, it wouldn't...
No, I understand, yeah, I understand.
But he's still brought, the point we're talking about is a person who may not, may have some vindictive nature against this other person, you know, another resident next to him, a neighbor, and they just shoot a, you know, a notice saying this person's delinquent with the property, just to start trouble, write it twice.
I'm not saying I, I don't disagree with the ordinance, but council, it's my impression, that council's rarely pass, you know, we don't have too many that kind of read that way, where you're...
It is, it is a little aggressive.
You're most guilty till proven innocent.
Um, but the idea behind it is that the township shouldn't need to tell you, you need to mow your lawn every couple of weeks.
True.
True.
Well, just in the instance that was brought to us, is, this is more than just mowing the lawn, a person leaves lawn mowers out there, I mean, there was a, um, and I went by a couple of times just to take a look at it, and I saw what the, the neighbor was saying, I mean, I, I, I am sensitive to the idea that, you know, one person's standard of needness and how their property ought to be maintained could differ from their neighbors, but, um, I mean, we're talking about the grass, we're talking about everything.
Good question, because I'm gonna tell you, I've gotten calls, and Jeff, I've talked to Jim about it, like in Sweden, I've had people who wanted to start with a person across the street and say, hey, the recycle can is sitting in front of their garage, and it's not recycled, they, it's been out there for two days or three days in front of there, and it's, I shouldn't be sitting out like that, so, there's a phone call for that right there, so if you get two calls on that, is that...
That's not what it addresses.
No, it's not, okay.
That would touch the cap, yes.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not a call from a resident that would incur the violation, it's the written notice from the township that your grass is too high, you have ten days to cut it, so it's not, I mean, the affected neighbors maybe could try and...
Then that's what I'm saying.
We could try and tighten the time to avoid that, if that's the direction you want to take.
If that would happen, I, I'm very uneasy about this, uh, that would happen, and then they, then they cut it, even they cut it on day ten, and then they got another viol-, so ten more days, they got it, you know, two weeks later, they got another violation, and they cut it on day ten, they're complying with our, our rules.
The current rules, yes.
Right, so we're making a new rule that says, if you get two of these, then you gotta, you know, then, then you have, then you're guilty of another offense, that the two little violations add up to the third violation, I don't know, um, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that, and it's not specific to these folks, but geez, they're just, I, I don't know, uh, I, I think, I think we all need to, to think about that one, but, um, anybody else have, have...
Well, not to deliver the point, but looking at this, it doesn't just talk about overgrown grass, it says at the end of it, filled garbage, trash, and debris, that's more than just grass, and that was the point that resident came here about, that the person keeps stuff out there, and it makes it look unsightly, and, so it's more than just the grass.
I get cold again all the time.
Do you?
Yep.
So with these, with these, um, grass, you send it to the township, sends a notice out, ten days they cut it, let's say we're day nine, so what, what are you saying, it's just ongoing, they, they, they just wait for the ten days, and the ten days, and the ten...
It's not, it's not obvious gaming, but I think that, especially with the banks that are cutting, or contracting for cutting of vacant properties, is, they're not gonna cut it once a week, and the property owners that are living next to there, there's some times during the year, especially in the spring, when if you don't cut it every week, it gets high, and so, you know, the neighbor will say, uh, yeah, they were here two and a half weeks ago, but they haven't been back since, and we go to give notice, and then it happens again, you know, it's another two and a half weeks, and, you know, we, we, we try to, to measure it and use some discretion, because there are times of the year when it's just, grass is gonna be higher, I mean, we get that people in the spring aren't gonna keep up with their grass unless they cut it every week, but, um, you know, people are particularly sensitive when they're living next to a vacant property, and we, we've had it happen with, you know, Oak Street is, with the management, where we gave a notice and ended up cutting it, and then they show up the same day to, to cut it, after we give a notice and cut it, because they didn't do it quite fast enough, so... And we have, we have properties that are owned by residents that are just open lots, that constantly we send a letter, and they always comply, but, you know, I shouldn't have, we shouldn't have to send four letters a, a year, you know, to cut this grass. It's kind, it's kind of, there's ongoing issues there, you know, we don't send the letter out, it's not gonna be cut.
It's in the done.
But it does get cut, but you gotta send a letter.
I mean, I don't know whether, could you do it, you know, you have one, not two weeks, one, like from May, April or May to such and such a date, you have to cut it every seven days, and then, I mean, I don't know what would...
How about if you put in the letter, this is what I want to do on, just, that says that you, the township is asking that you cut your grass, and after, after the, you receive the letter, you gotta cut your grass every two weeks, if you don't cut your grass every two weeks, township will not notify you anymore, but we will send somebody in to cut it for you to get your taxes.
That's basically what I, I tried to accomplish, I'm not sure that the math works out exactly, but I tried to set it that if you, you gotta do a little bit better than cutting every three weeks, so that gives people some leeway, because we don't, we're not trying to, we're not trying to hurt any of the residents or anything, we're just trying to, I mean, three weeks even in a dry summer, uh, you need it.
How can I tie in, and you know, which also, it does have to be tying branches as well, overhanging like sidewalks and stuff like that, because I'm gonna tell you, if we don't, I mean, I get calls even with branches and people walking in, I have to call Jerry, and I'm gonna tell you right now, if we don't get the call, or we don't, we don't tell them to do it, they don't do it, and it's really, people can't even walk on sidewalks, so I mean, that's another issue that's similar to this, that it's like...
That would be overgrowth, I think this ad would fall under this ordinance.
Okay, that's an issue as well.
Um, as long as, you know, I would say, I'm not against, um, accelerating the, the process, I just wanna make sure that this doesn't become punitive, uh, that it's, it's just, you know, I, I agree, I don't think we should have to tell people to cut their lawn, uh, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned with the, with the vacant and abandoned properties than with, with, you know, the residents that live there, you know, it's like, how do you, next we'll be telling them how to raise their kids, I just feel like we're, we're going into that gray area, I just get, just feels weird, it's like, and your children's hair should be no longer below the ear, it just makes me nervous when we start to get that far, I, you know, when it becomes, I think our, our, you know, we typically lean toward if it becomes a public health issue or safety issue, um, you know, I, neighbors that, that have stone, they've just taken out all their grass and they put stone like down the shore, you know, that may or may not be my personal preference, but who am I to tell them how to put to do in their house?
How about people that cut grass and just leave all their leaves and their cookings all over the sidewalks and streets, that's okay though?
No.
I'm just saying, that, that happens a lot too.
You know, uh...
At this point, we're kind of past the mowing season, or, I mean, it's still warm.
It is an issue though, like, and we, you know...
That we could table this and consider if there's a way to narrow it, if that's a policy.
Maybe give us a little time to think about it.
I don't think everybody's had the opportunity to...
To read, no.
Yeah, I know, that just came today, so...
So maybe that's really good.
If we tabled it, we get a little thought, maybe we can narrow it better than I have done already, and see if there's something that we can reach that council's comfortable with.
Did you send the workers copies too?
Yes.
Oh, you did bring the copies, okay.
Yeah, there's no, no question that there are some folks that, that need the ordinance to type it out, and, you know, let, let me just say for Brian's education that when, when the original iteration of this council was elective, we did, I, I think I have it on printed, um, yeah, this is the, uh, chapter eighty-nine, uh, this council did make efforts to, to speed up the process, used to be, what, it would be reported, and they'd have two weeks, and then this and that, we cut it back, and we cut it back, we cut it back, and we got it to the point where it seemed to be working, uh, now I think we're getting...
Now I think we're getting, you know, pretty deep in the weeds with, you know, and if you repeat, I mean, the repeat thing is inconvenient, but-
Well, if, I can try and think of other ways to close the loophole. If this continues to be something that council feels is too overbearing, too heavy-handed, then if we can't find another solution, then we wouldn't have done it.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll all read this through.
You know, in other areas, like I'm thinking of the sewer department, like the bills, I mean, people have the right to come to us and if there's a hardship or some type of extenuating circumstance, I think, I think something like that ought to be thought about in this regard. Like you say, I don't want to be punitive to a homeowner, especially somebody that might be going through, you know, difficult times, that's preventing them from doing that. Loss of a job, you know, the death in the family, I, I'm sympathetic to that. But we have, in other ordinances, an ability to come to us and explain why they didn't comply.
Right.
I think that needs to be considered if we go forward with any kind of language change.
So I think the horse has beaten. And we all, let's all read this, this memo and, you know, think about it, probably if you can revisit it again. I have no problem revisiting it again. I think that there's, there's probably, there's always tweaking that can be done. I just want to make sure that we're not becoming one of those towns that, you know, who we want, like some, like some-
It is sounding more like an HOA than a township.
Right, well, that's, that's exactly where I was gonna go, but I didn't want to say it. I'm glad you did. Jim, you're gonna be on the hotspot in a second, so get yourself ready. So the next item that we're going to discuss is the immediate strip on the Fairview Boulevard at Route one-thirty. Like, Jim, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions that I meant to send them to you so you can be prepared, but I think they're pretty easy. That is, Fairview Boulevard is ours, correct?
Yes, but there's a question on actually where the DOT actually takes jurisdiction and because they do take side streets up to a certain point, if that, those, you know, approach lanes are part of the intersection, part of the civilized intersection. I Oprah'd the DOT today, actually, asking for their jurisdiction on that. Because I found some conflicting information with the plans for that shopping center when they built the road, showing that the limit of DOT jurisdiction is actually closer to Route one-thirty than that actual island. And if that's the case, then we could just do that without permitting.
And, and, and to, to do that would mean, would we just simply, excuse me, remove the island and pave over it, make it, you know-
Yeah.
But you still have the, would you still have a little bit of that time?
I don't, I was, I was consulting with a traffic guy at my office about whether or not you need a gore, we call it, like either, you know, it's either striped, here it's a physical island. You know, when you're under like a single lane and you're approaching an intersection and it's a left turn lane, there's that yellow stripe, you know? That was what they're trying to accomplish here. And it's really just to get vehicles, you know, lined up and ready to merge. But it's not a requirement, it's more of like good engineering practice, but if it's causing a problem, you could, you know, I showed them a contemplating of just taking it out and kind of extending lanes up and, you know, so when you're coming around that curve, you know, it just opens up to four lanes, two left turns and three right. So I'm pretty sure we can do that. This, step one would be just find out whose jurisdiction it is. If it's, if it's our jurisdiction, we don't need to go to DOT, then, you know, we can move forward with that. And it's not, it's not expensive. I'll give you, give me like, if my next work session, I can probably have more information because I should have the Oprah request responded to by then and I should have a cost estimate. And it's, it's not very expensive, it's not a lot of area. You're just, it's just removal and then paving and not even much striping.
So let me, let me ask a question. So since that intersection is, is on a state highway and it, it affect, the traffic pattern is affected, affecting that intersection, the state wouldn't have a say. I mean, I, I, I hope we can do it, but the state wouldn't have a say because the traffic pattern is now affecting that intersection?
I, if it's not, if you're doing improvements to an area that's outside their limit of jurisdiction, no. You know, because you're not really affecting the traffic pattern at the intersection, you're not changing the number of lanes, you know, you're still-
You're adding more people into that lane because now it's, it didn't, well, it does, because if you can't get to that one lane, now you'll be able to get more there. And I, I see what you mean.
Yeah, in, in the way, in the, in traffic engineering, it doesn't really matter, it's all about the volume that's going through there, you know? If anything, it's only gonna improve.
No, I agree, but I have just come surprised.
Yeah, and the next question is, you know, if it is under DOT jurisdiction, we do need a permit, I mean, is this something you guys want to do or you want to petition the DOT to do?
I'd love to see the DOT.
Yeah, that, that, the latter is, you'll automatically be hit up with a cost share and like the, the scope of the project, and, and even if you are hit up with a cost share, there's no timeframe as when they're gonna actually do something. So I, I think this is more something that you can do on your own, just get an occupancy permit to do.
I'd see the difference in cost.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, what are we talking about?
In time.
What are we talking about?
Yeah, I, I was trying, I think under fifty thousand.
Under fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. Which is-
And I think that's like order of magnitude type estimate, you know, I just put some rough numbers, it's probably gonna be less.
And cost share be split?
Cost share, you're, you know, it's, you gotta, we'll figure out the cost in time delay, you know, how you put that into, if it's that big of a problem.
They say, yeah, we'll cost share with you fifty-fifty.
And we'll do it ten years from now.
Thirty. Oh, okay, never mind. I, I think, I, you know, let's, let's see what, let's take it one step at a time, find out if we can do it. And if we can't, let's, let's ask them if they'll do it.
Yeah, I'll have something, I'm probably coming back next in two weeks too, before we've talked about some other things and then I'll bring this up.
Why don't I get my different monitor there too, if you take it up. This was Marwile.
Oh, you know, I, I created a file for it and then they filed Marwile. But yeah, we want to talk about roads in a couple of weeks, so.
Yes.
Oh, good.
We're gonna talk about the same thing.
Okay.
I love roads.
Okay.
I think you do, I think it's just, our program, I think, is just great.
All right, so let's, let's get our reports from various folks within various organizations like, for instance, Jamie, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thanks, Jim.
Terry, what do you got?
I don't know.
What are yours, just so good. Jeff?
Just one item, as you know, this is homecoming week and the float activity is showing on and they always begin the parade starting off the right way. So they close down right way, they have the floats there, all the kids are there. And I had a request, but they put a couple of tables there while the kids were there to serve them breakfast. And people, they'll give me names, will take responsibility for cleaning up. They used to do it on the property next door, but that person's now got a freshman and this was for the junior class, but then they called back and said, you know, if the other classes weren't to take part, I don't see a problem with it. Or we just don't see a problem with it, but I just want to make sure council is aware of it. And there's always a lot of activity that-
Oh, yeah.
If you ever walk down the right way during, so I just wanted to make council aware. All my stuff is for clothes.
Jim, what do you have for us?
Yeah, the road program, they're on Drexel right now. Well, they're doing concrete work on Main Street and they started top paving Drexel today. They have to come back and do some more concrete work actually on Drexel before they finish top paving and then they're gonna move to Main Street. So it should, everything should be done within a couple of weeks. Sidewalks on Route one-thirty are completed, you know, going along with the-
Good rate.
They did, they did pretty good, it's a good rate contractor.
Very quick.
Who was that?
Very quick.
Espatada? Joe Zarco?
Very good.
Yeah, saved you some money on it too, get things done. You'll see in the final testament. And then, other than that, actually, you got the grant for CDBG, which is seventy-eight thousand dollars. I actually gave Jeff the grant agreements to look over and eventually sign. So then we gotta figure out, you, you budgeted for it last, with this year, so we gotta talk about, you know, spending money. The, the scope was Pheasant Run repaving that and Echo Port, I didn't get a grant. So yeah, I decide which one, if you want to do both or just one or- Pheasant Run would probably be most likely, eat up the entire grant. But we'll get you something on that for discussion. And then the HSDRF application that we've completed and I gave it to Jeff now to put over and sign. So if you have any questions for that, you can, just let us know with the answer in the next, next couple, maybe years. Other than that, I don't know, is there any other questions? Thanks.
Has it crossed it open?
No, I don't have any.
Cool. That's a good answer. Okay, so let's, let's go around the table. Dan, you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, just, I attended the Delran Senior Club meeting today and they had nominations for officers and it's kind of funny, it's one of the few meetings I go to where I'm the youngest person. And they're having, they're having a problem getting people to serve. And the president told the group today, there was about sixty people there, and if they don't have people step up, they're probably gonna disband. So for the residents of the town, it's open, anybody age fifty-five and older and, soon enough, soon enough.
In what world?
Their laws.
But just there, you know, to the, to the residents of the town, it's something to keep in mind. Someday, hopefully you're all gonna be seniors and maybe you wanna, you know, that, I could see the group, I, I recognize some of the people from coming here to meetings and, and things like that. They've obviously known each other for a long time and the camaraderie and the friendship is there. It serves a purpose for people when they get older. One of the problems, you know, obviously is isolation when you get older, so. It was a, I was glad I went, as a matter of fact, I, I rejoined the seniors. And they want me to run for an officer.
There you go, waiting for that.
Yeah, they were ready to nominate me right there.
You think?
Keep you busy.
That's all.
Thanks, Terry. Tyler, anything this evening?
No report.
Okay. Patty?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Can't anything?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to open the public.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we're in the public. Anything?
Hey, Chuck Stoll, one-eighty-four Natalie Road. So you were talking about the, the ordinance for the mowing and stuff like that, so one of the things you might want to consider to make it less likely to get people you weren't intending to is rather than it being two occurrences, being three. Because if you're fairly reasonably likely to get one occurrence, you're gonna be less likely to get two and even less to get three. So that's something you might consider. So maybe make the, the time period longer, but you have to get three occurrences rather than just two. Because you're much less likely to have that happen if you're not actually like not taking care of your property.